What are we doing?
So what are we doing?
Okay, I'm gonna make an emotion. I'm gonna make two motions here within this department. I'm gonna make a motion to appoint the following police officer, sir. Louis Wilson, as the chief of police.
Oh my god!
At a rate of twenty-five dollars an hour not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
What?
It's not personnel matters?
What?
Because it wasn't published in the agenda!
And what?
Oh my god!
Do I have a second? Or no?
What are your reason not to have Louis Wilson in the public?
Yeah, that's why I'm embarrassed. Solicitor right out of that.
I'm embarrassed to live in this relationship.
With this going on?
I'm embarrassed!
That's incredible, Steve!
That's why we wanted the solicitor gone.
This is incredible! What you are doing to our community right here!
Don't listen to him. Don't listen to him. He's doing, he's gone more for this township to set it back fifty years than anybody ever did.
Steve, it's out of order here. You're out of order.
I have a second, is there any questions from the lines? That's, that's it? One officer? Well, no, I said I'm gonna do it in two parts. I'm pointing at chief, aren't I?
No, we have a chief.
But we had a chief!
We have an excellent chief. Who has proven himself.
You got a motion to fire the chief, Ed?
No, I'm not firing anybody today. I'm not firing any officers.
You're gonna have two chiefs?
I'm not firing any officers today.
Two chiefs?
I'm not firing any officers today.
I'm asking if you're, if you're gonna have two chiefs?
I'm not gonna have two chiefs.
What are you gonna have, Ed?
One chief.
And who's the chief gonna be, Ed?
Did you, I just made a motion, Mr. Porowski.
What happens to this guy?
Control, chairman, he is a full-time officer, class A patrolman.
You just fired the chief?
No, I did not fire him. He is, he is, he is a police officer, full-time.
Demoted him?
And what I'm doing-
You've demoted him, excuse me.
No, no, what I'm, what I'm-
You've demoted him?
No, what I'm doing is I'm taking a full-time officer, I'm aware of how the past chief of police was here. He was an active patrolling chief of police. And what we, what I'm trying to do here is take another chief of police, we already have South Coatesville responding to East Battlefield calls. And vice versa. I'm trying to, to absorb the calls and achieve scheduling and put a full-time officer on full-time. And at the same time, save some money there and put an officer on the street. That's all I'm trying to do. Try to save some money and I'm trying to adjust the budget just a little bit to try to save money.
And last meeting, you said you would not reduce the police force, right?
I didn't reduce it, sir.
Yes, you did, Ed, you know you did.
Yes, you did.
I didn't, it's on YouTube, Ed.
Yeah, it's on YouTube.
You want me to start?
Yeah, it's fine.
I didn't reduce anybody here.
Mrs. Colp, you are being led astray. You are a lamb.
Yes, I am.
You are right.
You are a little lamb being led astray.
This is the second thing now tonight that you've done behind our backs, Ed.
Yes.
When I was in the county, you were like, "I had no idea that you wanted to change the solicitor."
And now you have another motion here to completely change the police department.
That's the reason the township is getting a big ass award.
I'm not hiring, but-
You're putting the township at, at risk for legal action against this guy.
That's why you're gonna get a open meeting. You wouldn't know that.
That's exactly what it was. Everybody knew you had something up your sleeve.
That's weird. It's not up to you.
Yeah, it's Ted.
Withdrawing those-
I didn't lock my kid in the house.
Withdrawing those-
As I stated, I do currently work for Louis Wilson in South Coatesville. And I will let you know that there has been many times that we, as his employees, have considered a vote of no confidence. I don't know, who knows what a vote of no confidence it is? Do you guys, are you aware of what that is?
Sure.
Okay, alright, I just want you to be aware of that. For the past two years, he has not even been able to get his department twenty-four-seven right now. I don't know if somebody's working right now or not. He can't even run that small department down there right now. And you're gonna bring him in here. He doesn't, he doesn't have a reporting system down there? He doesn't know how to type a report? I could bring up some stuff on my phone and show you some of the reports that he writes. Okay? I'm just letting you know that that will be the biggest mistake if you guys hire him. He cannot run a small borough that he's been there for twenty-five years. No reporting system, doesn't know how to use the MDCs, his guys don't trust him worth anything.
Doesn't know why they keep hiring him back.
Why is the council hiring him? Why is their council hiring him?
I can't speak for them.
I mean, he was just handling the road department over there as well, I mean, he had him in place.
I mean, I understand your- Because he's willing to undercut anybody-
Call it a local.
He's willing to undercut anybody to take somebody else's job for a lot cheaper than that. That's what he's doing down there.
Kathy knows about that name of the job.
Call it a local.
Rob, Rob.
Is there any other questions?
Could-
Miss Scott?
Okay, you made a motion to our, could you repeat your motion?
The motion, the motion is, is that I made a motion to appoint a following officer. I'm splitting that, that vote, that motion off with two, two motions. I make a motion to appoint the following police officer, Louis Wilson, as the chief of police, at a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour not to exceed thirty thousand dollars per year.
And it was second-
That math doesn't add up.
And it was second?
Twenty-five times.
Twenty-five dollars an hour, thirty thousand dollars per year.
That's per the CBA.
I'm saying that his budget for the year not to exceed thirty thousand dollars as a chief. As a part-time chief? Has it?
It's a maximum of twelve hundred hours per year.
Right, and he's eligible as a part-time officer only as eighteen hundred and twenty hours. And if he's administrative officer-
I was just doing the numbers, sorry.
Sure, I'm just addressing your, your, your statement. You know, it's addressing the administrative end of it and it's also addressing the scheduling of it. And it's putting an officer back on the street.
You have a very good lawsuit against him.
Yeah, yeah, you do, and we can sue the township.
For what? I have a motion before a government board.
And you're destroying a good department, is what you're doing, Mr. Porter. You're destroying the police department!
I will vouch.
Yes, you are! Because you're putting a person, as far as their boss, number one, that they don't have trust in, obviously, maybe you do. But, man, what you've done, I mean, I just cannot fathom what you are doing. And again, Mrs. Colp, I can't believe you're voting with them. First day on the job, don't do it, Chuck, you sit there and you haven't said one word after my jump. And I'm sorry, I apologize for raising my voice, and I won't raise my voice again, but Mr. Kilbore, you are an absolute dishonest, well, not dishonest, a disgrace to the board. Because you have not said one word. I wanna hear your words. And I really wish that you two was sitting on the other side of Mr. Porter and let's hear your vote first before Mr. Porter. You're doing a wrong thing here, Ed Porter. You're doing a wrong thing.
Well, to trust that, I mean, I don't see how I am. I'm trying to save money in a budget. The budget's almost one point four million dollars.
Absolutely.
It's jumping at twelve to twelve percent per year. I'm trying to get some accountability. This police department just took a man all the way to Chester County courts and didn't even bother to show up. And the charges were dismissed as they were taken through different municipalities.
Were you there, Mr. Porter?
I was at court, yeah, I was there.
You were there?
I was there.
And our officer did not show up?
To circunrises, I was present with Mr. Kilbore in court before the DA's office. No one from the East Battlefield Police Department was there.
Before the DA's office?
Before the DA-
Not in court?
Not, no, I was in court.
Not in court?
I was in court. I was in court, I was being brought in to be questioned. I was being brought in to be questioned, Chris. I was there to testify.
So, so what you're saying, you're taking out on me because my officer-
No, I'm not taking, I'm not taking anything out on anybody.
You're just blaming me for something I didn't do?
No, no, that's, that's, you, you, you really have to understand, I am, I am putting that into the mantle, I am not blaming you. I'm trying to control costs. I'm trying to control costs, that's all.
This is all part of the plan. This is why Land MacLeary was removed before, because Ed doesn't agree with their legal advice. Now he wants his own thing, he wants that solicitor here.
I never wanted to.
You're putting the township at legal risk.
I never wanted to.
You're an Eddie Herman.
There goes our village.
Wait, wait, Joe, wait. Wait, Joe, you will be civil. I know the suit makes you think that you're something more than you are.
Okay, now I'm gonna-
You're not, Joe, you're not anything. You're not anything in any which way. You accepted money from developers? Yes, you accepted money from developers? You brought in your friends before this board with the energy to guys in the beginning? You've operated as the treasurer of the Republican Party? You stood at the polls for eight hours campaigning for the last supervisor's race on who you thought should be up here? So you've done everything you could. All these people, Joe, joined you in your vote, but the people spoke differently than your suit and your body and your mouth.
Okay, please, stop it.
Mr. Porter's advice-
I realize, Ed, you're leaving yourself-
You hear what he just said to me? He called me an idiot, Steve. I started that, well, Joe, there's no need to do that.
And I'm sorry too, Joe.
But-
Mr. Hertz, I-
Chief, the point is, we're gonna have your police department, if you keep changing-
Chief, yeah, you're a lot of niggas. If you, if you win lawsuit against Ed, I think you'd be in the right group.
Mr. Hertz, can I just ask one question?
I have a motion.
I might not-
I have such a motion, so yeah, so you may speak.
I know I've been on my soapbox about how much for this police department, but, Mr. Porter, I have one question for you.
Sure.
Do you at all value their opinion of their coworkers? Do you value what they would think about having another officer in the department? Do you value their opinion? I call my question.
Do I value their opinion?
Do you value their opinion?
I mean, I take in everything that I've been wanting.
Okay, could you ask each and every one of these officers if they would want to work for or with Mr. Wilson?
You're sad, you're, I won't, you're gonna quit, Ed?
No, I'm not gonna quit.
Oh.
I'm just asking if you value their opinion about what he could do for the police department?
Right, and that's the, that's the-
The motion was on the floor.
Okay, so I, I see how, I see-
We're discussing, but I don't discuss. I just said the question.
It's so emotional, you can't open up to the fucking damn show.
We did motion, and there was a second.
And there was a second?
Yeah, and we're discussing.
What, what is it, what are we doing?
You're ruining the township, what you're doing.
I'm ruining the township, okay, let me get back to the budget. We're at one point four million dollars, right? We're at one point four million dollars and we just had to tax you because a certain department jumped nineteen percent. They are going into negotiations next year and the raises that they currently have for the last two years are at three point five. There's no doubt, and I don't, I don't expect anything less, that they're looking for raises going into those negotiations as well. The police department is jumping at such a rate of ten to twelve percent a year that we will be back to tax and tax and tax. There needs to be a comparable level of other municipalities out there. Look at Sadsbury's budget. Do you know Sadsbury's budget with a full-time police department?
They're not a full-time police department, Ed.
No. Do you know?
They are not. They are not.
That's not a question.
Your village has gone up one point two five.
West County's low in ours, and they have a full-time.
No, they're not. They're not.
Sadsbury's village has gone up one point two five, I saw it in the newspaper today.
Yeah, West County didn't.
Sadsbury.
West County is a larger township. And the patrolman worked here. It was also a chief.
They're patrolling fifteen thousand residents, that's almost double what we have here.
West County's a lot bigger than this.
And then when I ask for any type of way to save some money, to, to pull it back some, so I, as a, as a politician here, do not have to keep on coming back and taxing and taxing, I, I don't care of any solutions. So I'm trying to come up with a solution. I'm looking at another chief out there and possibly putting a, 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 a chief that can go out there and, and work. I mean, it's reduced in pay is not that substantial compared to what he'll have in mandatory overtime. I'm not, I don't feel like I'm causing him any harm in that. I'm just trying to come up with a solution here and how we can contain this budget. Because we all know it's jumping every year substantially. You can bet it's gonna go up another hundred fifty thousand dollars next year in the jump. And we need to contain this somehow. It's jumping every which way. Are we just to tax, tax, tax to no end? Or is there a solution?
They're gonna waive our raises? They're gonna do that?
Ed, you can't speak for everybody else, that's the problem.
I imagine they will waive it.
They would waive their raises for four years. I'm listening, Ed.
And that-
Wait, wait, wait.
I would, I would be, I would do that.
I'm listening, Chris, I'm listening to you, I'm listening to him, I'm listening to him.
Anybody?
Are you willing to waive your wages for the next four years?
This is what, this is what should be done, this is what should be done.
Wait, yes, but I-
No, raises.
Raises, I'm talking about the raises, you know, the past one was thirteen point five percent. We had a three, three, and a three point five, and a three point five. Are you able to speak on behalf of your police union?
No.
Say no, no.
Say no, Ed.
Because I'm listening, Ed. I'm trying, I'm trying to come up with solutions here, I'm listening.
I'll leave myself, I'll waive my raises.
Ed? I'm listening, Ed, you said something that perked me up, I'm listening.
I will waive my raises.
I know, Ed, but the problem is, it's not enough.
And I'll drop my health benefits.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't, you're part of the union.
Right.
You're a part of the union, you can't.
I see, Ed.
You can resign.
Ed?
Off the speaking hour about that.
I mean, if you're gonna demote a working chief, do you think he's gonna stay around?
Wait, wait, Ed.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, do you have any, I mean- How do we talk to you?
No, that's personal.
I never realized that, that's why I said that, I said, how do we talk to him? That's what I said.
Why don't you ask the solicitor? Oh, wait, that's right, he's not here.
Oh, wait, we did in the back, Joe, and what great advice. Just like the other one that landed something else in another position we had a problem with.
I'm just speaking for myself.
I know, Ed, and Ed, I'm listening, I mean, I'm listening here, and that's the, I'm trying to solve something that is just escalating. And I, I have to contain this somehow. And I, you know, realizing that Justin is no longer on the beat. And I realize, I remember when it was like, you know, to have the former chief. I remember what I saw as far as him out there and as far as what I saw as far as what he was doing on the daily activity. I'm not seeing that now. I'm not seeing that kind of level within that, that head person.
But isn't that personal?
At the end of the day, you're not gonna see any kind of level, because all these officers that we have have done a great job for us.
You're saying they're quitting? You're saying the police department quitting, so we have one point four million dollars for a police department? You're, or you're just-
Is that what you're trying to do?
No, 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 that's not my goal, I realized they're protected by contract, that's not my goal, I just said what my goal is.
Why would they stay around if, if we're up here just shifting stuff around without exciting the chief?
I'm not affecting them.
Without, you know-
I am not affecting their pay, I'm not affecting their union negotiations, I'm not affecting anything. What I'm doing is, is bringing in a chief at a lower rate and putting another full-time, putting something on the-
Ed, why do you have to do this so underhanded?
What's underhanded? The motion, the other motion failed.
So you just come out of this motion out of your head like, oh, yes, let's move the chief out?
Well, you're working on a solution, Joe, your sister is the task. You stand before these people, I champion this budget, first of all, it's an employee's budget, you really had no input on it all. I champion this budget, it's just a tax, what are you championing?
Like any other politician that the world is dealing with, what have you championed? Taxation? What a solution, because taxation always solves a budget problem. You can always go into the resident's pocket and solve that way. What, what a marvel idea that you've come up with, Joe. It's just amazing where you'll be and then-
And the idea of dissension is any better?
I just, you said-
You're undermining the chief that's in place, and everybody here, every meeting I've been to, has said they've done a great job. Now he's not capable, we're gonna reduce it, you're, you're gonna cause a cancer. You're gonna cause a problem that you have no idea, and it's gonna balance your budget, because a lot of people are probably gonna leave or not wanna be here.
We're balancing.
Now we're gonna lose our good callings, please, we're gonna lose all this prob- Because you want, you came at it the wrong way. If you come up and then his name was on there, hey, we're not gonna, we're not gonna hire this part-time guy to full-time, we're gonna bring in Lou Wilson. Everybody would've been pissed off beforehand, you came in backdoor.
No, I brought a motion.
You brought a motion, and that motion is causing dissension.
Did you see my agenda for the full-time officer?
What's your agenda?
It wasn't even on there, I just got this agenda today, my other agenda doesn't have the hiring of full-timers.
There's no reason to raise your voice to him.
He can raise his voice, that's cool, I'm good, bring your real brother. But you're, you're really, you're really going about it the wrong way.
I forget there's a microphone here.
You can take that microphone, Joe.
Between you and I, I didn't mean to yell at your backstage. I didn't have that on the agenda today, because Justin just resigned today. That's what happened today. What do you mean it came out today? I'm trying to solve a situation that we're walking into next year, Joe.
But you, you had the ability to make sure the promoting a guy is on there. It's a telephone call, hey, man, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna bring Lou, who's also a snowplow. I mean, it just seems dirty and underhanded, that's my opinion, I'm just giving you my opinion, give me here.
I'm not trying to underhand anybody, I'm not firing anybody, I'm hiring somebody.
You're hiring another guy? Two, two chiefs in, in one department? Two chiefs in one department?
No, they're taking his chief away.
I understand that, but he was the chief. You're gonna divide the divorce, you're gonna cause a problem to save a few dollars and it does you no good.
What's your solution for next year?
My solution for next year? Leave the two point two five alone, or one point two five alone, and figure out the cuts you guys were all talking about and meet every week like you talked about.
Where?
Hey, hey, I told you, you tell me where, I'll be there. I'll, tell me where and I'll be there.
You've never been there before.
Why can't I be there?
Because you can't be present for the negotiations. I sat through it, you know how many board supervisors showed up for parties?
Ed, you go to the meeting, you get the minutes, you get the paperwork, and we'll sit down and talk about it.
The problem is, you shouldn't have directed it at you.
The problem is, you complain about the past and not about the future.
I'm telling you how it's gone the last two times. I don't fault the police department in negotiations. I don't fault them, they should fight for everything that they should get. The problem is, is our budget is so much higher than other municipalities for the same level of service. That's where we run into a problem. How do we contain this? We're almost at one point four million dollars. What is the solution other than to tax and, and, and basically increase taxes here over and over again? We have something that's just escalating.
But you, but you said to us that you have a whole entire year with this surplus money to figure it out. And you said it wasn't really gonna be with us, I heard you, I listened. But you know what? What you're doing right now is just crushing, crushing that force. You're gonna bring in another chief with a chief already here, you think that it's not gonna work. You're causing dissension, why?
Everyone's still getting paid a lot.
That's not the point.
It's, it's a bad, good way of getting it done.
The problem is, you're taking a chief and demoting him.
Right.
If I was demoted at work, I would probably wanna think about leaving.
Absolutely.
Why not? Is that what you're saying? Chris, you're leaving.
That's the point.
It's not what you're saying, that's what you just said.
You're not blindsided.
If you did, I wouldn't blame it.
That was Steve's opinion you just saw, not, not Chris's, Steve's opinion.
That was my opinion, you're taking a person from their position and has done a great job and demoting them. I mean, if I, if that happened to me in my job, I'd be looking elsewhere too, and you're gonna have that with the rest of the officers. If you don't have a lawsuit to begin with.
Yep, you do.
And then you're gonna have the rest of the officers just not wanting to be here. They'll, they'll ride it out, they'll, they'll do what they can, and then they'll be gone. And we'll be back to officers who don't know the area, who haven't been here for a while, and it's just dissension, nobody will wanna look here. Ed, I, I, you're shifting stuff around, it is a point, because, because this is a personnel matter, which you decided on your own to go and do, talk to Lou Wilson. Joe had no idea, I had no idea, I don't know, Charles and Carol did. But that, you know, I, I never, no, buddy, we did not.
Yes, you did, I know, I know, Joe does.
Okay, do you, give me, no, no, Joe, no, Joe, give me a minute, give me a proof. I'm not gonna sit up here and be accused of being blocked.
No advertising, if you look back through the minutes, Mr. Hertz, it said that we will advertise all jobs. All jobs. Road department, boards, that was in the minutes. And it's also part of the minutes that we will advertise all jobs. You have not done that. There's also, can I also let you know, there are police officers out there with a act one-twenty. First of all, you have to have the act one-twenty to become a police officer here. That's one of the qualifications, and Mr. Porter knows that as well as I do. So for you to sit up there and tell me if I don't know, I do know some areas that, that have been, without getting personal, and I'm not gonna get personal and with any of you supervisors. But I happen to know there were some backroom deals, alright? And I-
Not by me.
And I can tell you right now, I've been at school board morning. And for anybody to come up here and make, if any of you gentlemen and ladies make a motion, that tells me you're doing it in an open forum for the public to discuss. But then as a chairman, and I gave the, the treasurer's, and it had been passed rules, and I want you to read over them as chairman, and I talked to the past chairman and the chairman beforehand. There, there are rules how to conduct a meeting. You cannot have people yelling back and forth at each other. They conduct themselves to the board and not attack each one of the board. They're supposed to be to the chairman. And then the board members can discuss it, make a motion, and whatever the motion goes to, that's it. We have a lot more to do on this agenda. I know there's dissension as far as that motion, but we should, gotta go on with the township meeting. And as a chairman, you're supposed to have control. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Doc? Yeah, and, uh, Ms. Colp, I'm only speaking to you because really the two on the other side are- I don't know whose opinion you value here, I don't know in your heart whose opinion you value. Mark my words, if Lou Wilson is hired here, he will run this place into the ground. This chief knows how to work, fix the computers when, when there's something, anything wrong with it that I don't even understand. Lou Wilson cannot type a report, he doesn't have a reporting system, he will run this place into the ground. I say that as an employee of his, okay? I only work there because my schedule allowed me to fill in shifts, take three, four, five, if I wasn't getting enough here. That was the only reason. Like I said, his guys have talked many times, we do not trust him, he lies to us, he will run the place into the ground. This person.
I have a second.
It's like Sean attacking, I don't know that.
Mr. Donald, even if I make a change here with the chief, but I, I, I would not vote to hire you.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking you to hire me. That was a statement to her about the motion that's on the floor to hire Lou Wilson as chief.
Yeah.
My, my employment aside, that's fine. I, I, I'm not, I didn't speak of my employment at all. My employment as an officer of his, that's all I'm speaking of.
Yeah.
And you don't realize that.
That's called peer review, and, and I don't know why you don't do that, Mr. Porter or the other person, it's called peer review. When I hire people at Brady White Hospital, and when we hire other people outside of my department, members of our support, it's called peer review. We take everyone's recommendation. What you've done, Mr. Porter, is wrong. It really is wrong, and the issues that you've just created and the turmoil is, is just flabbergasting. There are ways to save, I agree with you, here's what you say.
How?
Do it back at the table.
Do it back at the table.
How?
There's gotta be ways to save it, not by doing this.
How? I'm asking you.
Last week you told us, you told us you were gonna debate it all.
How?
Look at all, everything across the board, as you say, you can look at insurance, you can, you can bid that after at the year.
You did it two years ago.
Two years ago. Bid it out. Put on top of it, if you can't find, then unfortunately we're stuck with the one point two five mileage. What you're doing has just destroyed the township.
It's gonna increase next year and the following year, you're gonna have a decision by basically possibly a, either the board agreeing with the police department on particular raises or, and I don't, I don't blame them for fighting for everything they have. Our contract, there's things in our, I mean, there's things in the contract that you just don't find in other municipalities, like-
That's where you're trying, we're trying to address that. The network here, that oughta change.
There's not stuff in the contract you'll find in other municipalities.
Because we had a meeting with the DA, with the police.
Yeah, but the DA has, no, I don't blame them. The police department not for taking on anything that DA is, when you push that to the point where you're already in negotiations and they don't go with you on that, Steve, you're in trouble. We've seen this twice already and I don't blame them, we lose every time. The solicitor that you were so worried about getting rid of, he recommended an arbitrator, though he says to the board, we have an opinion about who the arbitrator is, that has nothing but landslide victories, even overturning Philadelphia police chief. And any decision of where they caught officers at Philly games or cell phones, that arbitrator was a slam dunk and that's the solicitor's advice of who our solicitor should, our, our arbitrator should have been. I don't blame the police department for fighting everything they can, but show me how you're gonna solve this without-
By working with them miraculously and being, I civil with them and getting to a minimum.
Medical, you're never gonna straighten out, the raises, they're gonna ask for raises over four years, I can't blame them.
Nobody wouldn't, I mean, they're-
How are you gonna solve that?
You work with them, they're willing to work with us, but probably not now.
What does that, no. Not now. You never, they, this has gone on for the last two contracts, you have to contain this.
I was a part of it, I'm working, was working with them and like I said, they probably won't wanna work with us now, but we're getting there.
What? I gotta get out of here. Alright. See, Chuck.
Hey Chuck, do you want me to call an ambulance?
Wait. Okay, Chuck? Hey Chuck, you all right?
That's what we don't need.
I got it, I got it. Chuck's got it.
What status are we at at the meeting?
Emergency?
I'm up on emergency.
Emergency? Call a recess.
Yes, we have, uh, we have a gentleman with East Vallowfield.
All out.
And he's out.
He's out, Joe.
Yes, call, call a recess, call, call a recess.
Steve, call a recess. Hey, A D now!
A D, A D.
Ray Lee's outside.
Ray Lee went to get him outside. He pulled up his truck.
How's that? East Vallowfield, it's on Strasburg Road, it's, uh, twenty-two sixty-four Strasburg Road. Forty-four? It was three. Three nine seven three.
There you go, there you go, he's gone, is he breathing, he's breathing?
Yeah, I don't know, they said, they had the defibrillator.
We have P F S, uh, seven. Yes. Is he breathing?
He's breathing.
Yes, he's breathing. He's unconscious. Yep, P F S stands. This actually just happened in the township with the-
Hey, Ed. How you doing?